I don't know.
I don't know what he mean.
Here we go.
It's being recorded.
We are on. Where's Dan?
I think we're good. We'll just. So I think you're okay.
Okay, alright, so.
He can dig.
Alright, so, um.
He can dig whenever he wants.
What are we doing? We're doing the, um.
Building. That foundation ain't gonna be done by the first week.
Okay, so, um, in the absence of Mr. Harvey, I will call the, uh, Special Water Board to order. Um, there are no additions or deletions from the agenda. Is there any public comment? Let's see. Um, and they're, okay, so public comments, additions, we'll do the minutes. We have the regular water department meeting on this coming Monday. We're doing this to try to accommodate the person buying the property because they need to do the closing, et cetera. So the topic for today is the water, the water bill abatement. And you should have three documents in front of you. I sent you a little summary. Um, not wanting to do all the standing and uploading and everything, um, but, uh, Josh Brace has provided the account summary showing the charges and the interest, the letter, letter from Mr. Now, and then, um, Josh's memo recommending abatement. So for this particular property, the act, the, the property has been disconnected for quite some time. Um, I don't, I can't remember what Thor said, but I mean, it might be seven years even or seven six years.
It's been shut off at the street for many years at this point, and the house has been more or less abandoned.
Right, and the, the, the former owner passed away and the property was in probate. So this neighbor wants to purchase the property and it will need a tremendous amount of work. And I guess he came in to see you and he was astonished to discover this bill. I would hope he has been to see Property Tax Department, because I don't know if they.
Well, that would have to go to Sunderland.
Oh, yeah, I thought it was right on the, oh, it's, it's on the border, but it's Sunderland. Okay, so that's not our business. Okay, so, um, you know, so I don't know exactly what's going on. He's supposed to have a closing at the end of the month. Um.
He's definitely gonna purchase it. Um, his kids coming up, uh, they have a small family. They're either gonna knock it down and put up something new, or they're gonna try to rehab it, um, and you just asked that we would reduce the bill, um, make it a little easier bill as well. And my recommendation, my letter was at the bare minimum to at least take away the interest on the account, um, in just charging the forty-three, forty-five, um, and then maybe a portion of that as well, but at the bare minimum, take away the interest. Because it has been sitting there vacant for so long, and the water is shut off. And he's been getting billed the base rate, well, the property has been getting billed the base rate, um, for a long time without using any water. So the interest has been just gaining on top of that, so that's why my recommendation would be to take away the interest, and we're also adding somebody that in a couple of years is gonna have a family there and is gonna be using water and hopefully pays the bill, so.
So, I mean, I certainly think there's an argument, um, for that. Um, I guess that, uh, my concern is that this is a significant chunk of money. This is a significant chunk of our accounts receivable. And it was no part, it was, there was no fault of the town in this situation coming about. It was the previous owners or the heirs. I don't know. I don't know. It's not even my business, like probate or whatever. But that was in no part of the town that I wouldn't have anything to do with it. My recollection is that even though the water is turned off, we do not stop billing because the water is there. It is available. And that has been our policy in the past. Now, that's the policies, policies about this, about active, inactive, disconnection, reconnection, and the fees for those things. It's one of the things that Josh wants to talk about next week, and I think we should. Um, but right now, it's not clear to me. I'm not, I don't know if I'm comfortable forgiving the charges. Because the water was there, it was available. The fact that the house was vacant and they weren't using it is not relevant. Um, so it seems to me that that's been our policy in the past. Um, I would feel comfortable forgiving part of the interest. I certainly want somebody to be able to buy this property and bring it back into productive use. But I don't wanna forgive too much interest, remembering that every time we say, okay, we're not, if we say we're not gonna collect it, that means that there's less money in the system than the other ratepayers have to make up the difference.
So I guess my question would be, why are the new people paying the bill if they're purchasing the property? Shouldn't they go back to the former owner?
So usually how it works, it doesn't matter who pays off any past due amount of closing. It just needs to be paid off.
And.
Lean, right, I mean. Technically, in this situation, the bank owns it and they're not gonna pay it. So as a buyer, he's responsible for paying this and also any back taxes due in Sunderland. So I'm sure he wrote a letter to Sunderland as well, asking for a little bit of forgiveness there.
Well, the bank wants to sell, everything's negotiable.
Well, see, that's, that was my thought, because I know that when you do, I mean, I've been involved in very few property transfers, but that you kind of pro-rate the oil tank, the water bill, the property taxes, you know, depending on when you're doing it. And I understand he's shocked because this is a significant bill. And how would he know that this, this was there? Um, but, but, but that's again, like, not, not our fault. And so I would feel that he needs to go back to the bank and says, look, you didn't pay the water bill, because somebody was getting those bills. We were mailing bills.
And the way I look at it is, the bills, not including the interest, is what we actually charge for the water.
Okay.
So we should get that back. But the interest is just compounding on that total number. And that's why I recommend that we should just get rid of the.
So in other words, if this house had been occupied for, for those years, all we would have collected would have been the water bill.
Correct.
And.
If somebody just paid their bill.
We would, it would just be the.
It would just be.
Four, three, four, five, so. Um, I, I mean, I think that's a good point. That's a good point.
That's a good point.
So that's why I don't think it's fair to him, or if it wasn't him, somebody else purchasing it, that they would have to eat that much interest. Because it's not necessarily what we've been charging for a bill.
How long has the bank owned it?
A long time.
Long as I've been on the board.
I think I remember this. I mean, the bank should have been paying that. And it's the bank's responsibility, in my opinion.
Yeah. I, I mean, I.
We had a property on Warren Brook that got tore down. And they came in to ask that the service be disconnected permanently.
Yeah.
And we.
Right, and then you pay a reconnection fee if you wanna have it.
If they wanna get that, right. And why was that not done?
That, and that I don't know. And I, and one of the things we have to discuss is this whole disconnection, reconnection, inactive, because I think that's what that account, it's inactive because there's no house there. Um, and so I think that, there's a whole bunch of policy issues we need to, to discuss, but, but here, I guess the, the question that I would have, is it fair to other ratepayers that someone who has not paid, that an account that has not been paid for so long would pay no interest? So that, in other words, they would pay the same overall as I, what I pay, and I pay my bill every quarter. So, you know, so I think that, one of the reasons that you have the interest charge, what happened?
I had to admit, Janet.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, Janet.
Um, one of the reasons that you get an email?
No, but I just thought about it, realizing she wasn't on the call. We're recording a Janet, though, so you can play it back.
Um, so, so one of the things that, that, uh, so that's one of the things that, that I'm thinking about, that, um, we did not have the use of that money as it came in, and that there should, should be some penalty for that. I absolutely agree, not the full, full thirty-five ninety-six, but I don't know that I'm comfortable giving all of it.
Refresh my memory, and this was a while back, the last time I was on the select board. We had somebody come to ask for, and Janet, maybe you can help with this, if you remember or not. They bought the house and then realized that there was a large past due balance. I feel like it was out on three thirteen. Maybe it was the rat house, but I'm not sure.
Could be. I don't know.
And I don't remember what we agreed to do, because in that case, they had already closed on it and then realized that they had this big past due balance, which was really a, a, a title insurance issue at that point, or an attorney issue. And I, I feel like we didn't abate that bill, and they had to pay it.
Well, a, and I, and I think that it's hard to have policies that apply perfectly to every circumstances, and we do do things case by case. Because each case is different, and just because we abate one bill doesn't mean we have to abate another. We're going case by case. Um, I do feel that anybody that purchases a property is responsible for finding out about any.
Well, it's part of the title search.
That should be, and so I don't know why he didn't, if, why he made a deal with the bank, if that's what he's done. If he's thinking about closing at the end of this month, he must already have a deal in place that did not take this into account. Um, so, uh, you know, and it would be too bad if we said we're only gonna abate part of this and then he can't do the transaction, but I just, you know, I, I don't know.
And I think it's different, because the interest is more or less built in there as an incentive for somebody to continue to pay your water bill, like you.
Right.
But for somebody that that has nothing to do with it, is coming in and trying to purchase this, and this is also a large negative on our balance sheet, that would go away as well.
Yeah, but we wouldn't get the money. It would go away as an accounts receivable, but we wouldn't get the money.
Well, we're getting, all the bills that we sent out, we're getting all that money back.
If we got the forty-three, four, five, okay.
Right.
I love the idea of a, of a small, young family coming into town, but I agree with Cynthia that, um, you know, is it, is it fair to the rest of the ratepayers? I do like the idea of kind of getting rid of the interest, because it's just a number that's compounding over and over and over, and they can pay the bill. And that would be obviously helpful on everybody's account. Um, and I, I don't wanna, uh, negate the fact that the young family moving into town, and it's just.
I know, but that's what, that's what this guy's plan is now. We have no idea what will happen.
True.
We have no, he could find it, and then it could be too hard to fix it up, and it could just sit there.
Yeah, good.
You know, so we do not know what's gonna happen. This is our chance to recruit at the very least, the forty-three, forty-five.
Exactly.
We gotta get that.
I agree, yeah. I was gonna say, you could take a third of the interest off. Maybe I'd be willing to think about that.
Which would go to what? Twenty, twenty-four hundred?
Ninety-seven sixty-three.
I was looking at fifty percent.
I would, I would go as far as fifty, fifty percent. Um, I mean, Josh would like us to have all the interest. I can't do that. But I could do half. Um, and that's not nothing. Um, but this gentleman needs to go back to the bank and say.
He's gonna fight with him about that, too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
What would be his total if we gave fifty then? It'd be, is it that, Jim?
Six, one, four, three. Six, one, four, three, ninety-eight.
And also, if he was, if he was not able to pay.
You're.
Yeah. Fifty percent of the interest plus the bill.
Would be what?
It would make the interest, if you took half the interest, it would make it seventeen ninety-eight, twenty-two. What about forty percent?
Plus the bill is sixty-one, forty-three, ninety-eight.
And I agree with you guys, though, too, at the same time, the, the, the bank should have been dealing with this all along.
Yeah, they, they, you know, the, the, this is a kind, it's amazing how many times this kind of thing happens. Given the value of properties these days, I don't understand the behavior of the proposed entities or the annies that are holding it, or whatever the probate was going on. I mean, it's just really, really sad, really sad.
To do a forty percent discount, that could us a little bit more, it would make it twenty-one, fifty-seven, eighty-seven.
Yeah, I, I, I think, I think I'm comfortable with fifty percent. Um, you hate fifty percent? Mr. Harvey?
I work.
Yeah.
Oh, we're, we're, I don't even know what this is.
I think it's good.
Yeah, we'll let, we'll let you know.
Okay. Maybe, maybe Dan can test the discount amount when it gets settled.
Yeah.
I'm okay, I'm okay with the fifty-two. I mean, I, I can go that far. I, I know. You take that number, but.
I mean, I would have.
It's not thirteen percent.
I would have offered a third off.
That's, okay, so he's going to forty, because that's twenty-three.
So that's kind of where I'm like, at forty. I mean, but because really, the bank should have been paying this, and if it was bank-owned, it's the bank's responsibility, and I'm not really in the mood to give the bank a discount.
Okay, so Dan, we're discussing the, um, this situation. Um.
This here.
Yeah, and, um, we have the.
This is the one you were telling me?
Yes, yes.
We're all over the board.
The board.
Yeah.
We're all over the board.
Yeah, we're all, we're all, we're overboard, we're overboard. Um, no, the, the basic discussion is the board has more or less agreed that we are not gonna abate any of the actual charges owed, which is the forty-three, forty-five, but that we will abate a portion of the interest. And right now, the discussion about the interest is that some of us are comfortable with abating fifty percent of the interest, and some of us will prefer thirty percent, and so now we're talking about forty percent. So if you wanna express where you are.
Okay, um, I agree, that's not even impressive. And as far as the interest goes, is it a deal breaker?
We, we don't, we don't know.
Purchasing the property.
He was surprised to find out about this bill.
Mm-hmm.
And he wants to, he has a closing at the end of the month. So our impression, it's just our impression, we don't know any of the details, is that he may not have known about this, so this may not have been incorporated in his purchase offer.
Right.
And so now we would have to go back and renegotiate the purchase offer if he has to pay this full bill.
Right.
I don't know if he will say, I can't pay any of this. Um, you know, and it's kind of like not our responsibility, but we certainly would want this property to come back into productive use. But there's a limit to how far we can go to s- have the other ratepayers subsidize that.
Fifty percent is seventeen ninety-eight, twenty-two. For a total of six thousand one hundred and forty-three dollars and eighty-eight cents.
So this is the total bill that we sent out. All of them, and that's gonna be the interest that's compounding. And that's the total.
And it's been some number of years.
Yeah, it's been a lot of years.
Yeah.
I remember this name after I, I.
This is the one right over the other gentleman.
Dan will know. Dan, do you remember, it was the house on three thirteen? The last time I was on the board, came to us for.
For the wa, uh.
Is it the rat house?
It was the water, yeah.
Yeah.
The rat house.
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
The rat.
Uh, do you remember what we did on that?
Uh.
Cause that was one of those that it closed, and then they.
They closed it, and then he came back and I don't believe.
I remember we sent him back to the title insurance company, because it was, that's a title, that was a title insurance issue.
And, and if he was unafforded about this, they didn't do a very good title search.
Correct.
Right.
So.
This one hasn't closed.
He hasn't closed.
This, this transaction hasn't closed.
Right.
So this has obviously come up in due diligence.
Except for what, the twenty?
That they've recognized, but it's bank-owned. So my argument is that the bank could have pulled the paper.
And the bank should have made him aware, but at the very least.
The bank should have been paying this the whole time. I don't know where the bills were going, but you know, it's like.
Closing is Friday, Thursday.
Oh, sorry.
Well, I just don't want you to change your battery.
This week, this week?
Twenty-fourth.
Oh, gosh.
So.
I think he negotiates with the bank to some degree, but.
If. I would say certainly go back to the bank. If he has to pay this out of pocket and it's a deal breaker, we don't get the principal. And if we make a concession of thirty, forty, fifty percent of the interest, is, does that make it a deal breaker? I don't know.
It sounds like a little bit that I, well, my thought was to alleviate all the interest.
Okay.
That was my opinion, um, because his water's been shut off to the home.
Correct.
For a long time at this point.
The interest built up on this is against the estate, not against him.
Right, it was not his, it was not his concern, right.
So that's why that was my suggestion. Um, and speaking with him a little bit, it sounds like it's gonna be his responsibility to take care of the past due taxes he's on going and the water bill. Sounds like that's gonna be his responsibility.
Right.
So.
I would say if, if it makes the deal go through and makes it productive and makes it a, uh, an active account that he's paying his water bill, if we let the interest go, because it was in probate when you, I mean, it's like five years ago.
But it's like, how is that, how is that our responsibility?
The bank should pay the whole. Not.
The bank should pay the whole thing. I mean, um, and it should, and the purchase price should be adjusted to reflect that. I mean, I just don't see how the water department should be bearing this cost. I'm willing to abate some of the interest, but the thing is, he may say, I can't afford seven thousand. I'm not buying this property. We, that is a possibility, but he might even say. But in my, he might even say, I can't afford four thousand. You know, there's, we're not, you know.
We don't know.
Right, and we can't really make this decision under that speculation. Um, I mean, I, I definitely think we should abate some of the interest. Um, but I think he's gonna have to go back to the bank to get the.
Abating.
He knows right here that. The interest and penalties was owed by the past owner.
Correct, and he passed.
And he owns the property directly connecting to this, and he looks like he keeps a very clean property, clean house. And he's also came from Pennsylvania, moved in, and has been living there since then. Now his kids wanna basically do the same thing and clean up the property and make it a little better than it is now. So.
His adjoining property.
He's got the cemetery. He has a well.
He's got the cemetery property above.
Yes.
Up above.
Up above.
So. Okay, long-term is his desire, because then he'll make it a contiguous lot when he buys that property. It'll become a contiguous lot.
He was originally gonna try to look to have his kid come up and build a house on his property, and he decided against that.
Well, but he has a well for his house, but now the lot becomes a contiguous lot.
So does he, does he get rid of the?
So does he get rid of the well and service his home from the Arlington Water Line?
Mm-hmm. I told him that we cannot add anyone to the system and that if you were to disconnect from the system, there's no adding back on.
That's because they're doing, you're doing a hydrological analysis.
I understand that.
Of the system and everything.
But now you have a contiguous lot.
But see, I think all of, all of that is irrelevant. All, all of that is irrelevant. We can't speculate about what his intentions are.
I mean, I can go to court and argue that.
But, but whatever his intentions are, that's not relevant to this decision.
No.
I mean, um, because what, even if he made a statement about what he planned to do, or we speculated about what he planned to do, he may not do what he says, he may not do what we speculate. I think we need to settle on, I mean, our policy in general, with any of these abatement sister situations, is unless there's some problem that we did, like I remember there was one time when during our repairs, there was a spike in water pressure, and it triggered a leak in somebody's house, so their water bill was really big, but it was because of our repairs that triggered that leak, so we abated that bill, you know, that kind of thing. It was something we did. That has nothing to do with us.
I am afraid of abating the interest because it will set precedent in case so that any bank-owned property, the banks will be like, oh, we don't have to pay this, and go, we don't have to pay this, just go to the select board meeting and they'll abate the interest on it.
Just, just drag our feet long enough and we will.
Right? Well, and that's my fear, right? I mean, they're smart about it.
Oh, they are. But it really is their responsibility. I'm not saying it's this guy's responsibility.
I don't know, I'm.
He.
Is there anybody there?
No. Oh, yeah.
They're probably getting ready for the seventh PM. We're running a little over.
Um, is it really, is it? Is it okay to let him in?
Yeah. Don't edit it.
Okay, all right, so, um.
We have to make a decision and wrap this up. I guess somebody needs to convince.
Okay, so, so I'm gonna make a motion that we abate half of the interest portion of the outstanding water bill, which would be one thousand seven hundred ninety-eight dollars and twenty-two cents. So that the total, the actual charges owed plus half of the interest would be six thousand one hundred and forty-three dollars and ninety-eight cents. Is that where we had, Janine? Okay, so I make a motion to abate half of the outstanding interest so that the total bill would be six thousand one hundred and forty-three dollars and ninety-eight cents. Is there?
Is there a second?
Thank you.
A, a second, dude.
Motion made by Cynthia and second by Glenn to abate half the interests.
We say one discussion point.
Discussion.
Is, is everybody good with setting that precedent for future situations like this?
I think that, but I think that, I think that we have done, we have done abatements. I agree that the bank is a complication, um, but I can't, I can't just do, do nothing, because I wanna support what this guy's trying to do. And he may say, I can't pay all of this, or I can't get the bank to pay it. I'm not doing this. Um, I, I agree with you that, that it's something to bear in mind, but remember, we don't, this is not a precedent, like a Supreme Court precedent, where everybody, we are doing case by case, and nobody should expect.
I, I agree with, I, I can understand where Matt's coming from, though. It's just.
I mean, if this motion doesn't pass, as we can go to forty percent or thirty percent, um, or we can have.
I am happy getting something. I just wanna make sure that we're not setting.
Like Dan said, we're gonna get.
I don't think.
If he buys this property, we get the bill.
That is a good, at least we get the bill, which is more than the interest, so.
It's a huge part of our.
Yes.
That's a big chunk.
It's a huge part of our.
Yeah.
Yep.
The, the thing we should watch in.
Fifty percent of that.
Hundred percent of it.
This isn't the only.
This is another estate like this.
Right, this isn't the only estate.
Yes.
Right.
And be very careful.
Yes.
To not just roll over on each one of them, just because we did all this.
And I, you know, and I almost, I almost wonder if, if it would make sense to try to contact any other estate accounts.
Well, we should have our attorney in contact.
Exactly, for collections purposes, you know, before we get to this point.
Yeah.
Something.
And, uh, the other thing we might wanna consider for not just this one, but others in the future, we may wanna consider filing a lien in the time of search, so when they do the time of search.
Well, we should, absolutely.
Absolutely.
So.
I always thought that was good.
Because it wasn't there. That probably is on us. I don't, I'm not saying it is, but I'm saying, the way to be sure to get these.
I think those are good discussion points for us at the water meeting for policy.
Yeah, and I think, yeah, and I think, and I think that this is, this is, um, such a longstanding one, and when they start, you have no idea that eight years later, you know, it's like, but, but for this one and the other state ones, any other state ones, we should take steps to, to put a lien in the file and, and maybe contact them for collections or something.
Then, then you're catching it longer for this step.
We've persuaded me to be generous, so.
Oh.
It's hard today. It's been hard today.
You're not, you're not necessarily wrong, you know, but.
We gotta get another meeting to go, too, so.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 We need a poll. Most, who cares?
Okay, before we close the water meeting, um, just to remind everybody that we will have the regular water department meeting next Monday at seven. And, um, uh, Josh will, of course, have all of his reports on his activities and issues. We will also need to have, um, some discussions about different policies, and we may have to have an executive session to discuss some legal and, and other issues. Um, and, but the main thing, the policy that we wanna think about, and I'll be sending, I'll be sending you guys something about this, is this question of, um, disconnection, reconnection fees and deactivation. I mean, this idea that if your house burns down, then it's deactivated and you're not paying anything, whereas here, we disconnected it, but we were still charging. Whereas here, we disconnected it, but we were still charging. And, um, when would we do a deactivation? And I think that Josh, in general, you felt as if. We might wanna consider having a higher fee to disconnect or deactivate, or reconnect or reactivate. But not charge people when they're not using water. But my understanding is that we've always felt, hey, the water's there. As soon as you want it, it's there, and the idea that you're not gonna pay for the availability of the water, even though. You go to Europe for two years and you don't want it, we should still be getting that water. So I don't know what the consequences for. The income would be if people could disconnect and, um. Not, not pay the base fee. This is, this is significant because there are people who are doing work on their properties or have multiple properties. And they wanna disconnect and not pay fees while they're doing the construction. And right now, they could certainly disconnect, but they would still be paying the fees. So it's, this is a live issue, and I think we need to clarify, um, what we wanna do. Uh, and I don't know that we can put in place a whole new policy in one meeting, because usually we have to.
They may have to do a hearing process.
Yeah, so, so anyway, Josh, is that pretty much?
Yep, that's pretty much the baseline of that, and then I'll put together my two cents and a breakdown of what I think the charges should be.
Yeah.
And there, if somebody was to go to the disconnection. Um, or deactivation, I should say, there would be a maintenance fee charge. It wouldn't be the total, but would be a charge for the handful of people this would fall under.
That's right.
But I got, I'm working on that, and that will be done before next meeting with a couple other.
That's right, I forgot about the maintenance fee, and, and Josh was talking about having the, those fees for reconnection or in activation or anything. Higher than they are now, so people aren't doing it frivolous, frivolous.
Right.
But the maintenance charge would be lower than what it is, so people would only do it when it really made sense, um, and not do it. Okay, so, um.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Jamie and second by Matt.
Janet, are you good? Do you need a minute? Can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Alright, good Janet, thanks, I just wanna make sure.
Monday.
See you Monday.
So Matt, do we have this?
If not before.
Yes.
Is it all the same meeting?
It's all the same link on the minutes.
Okay.
Yep.
So I don't think we have to do anything.
Okay.
Okay.
We're recording, so.
Yeah, move on.
Okay, and so, um, one thing before we get started is that, um. Um, we had, a couple of, I, of things have come, come, come up. Um, that are not on the agenda, I don't think any of them are really big items.
Mine can be all other business.
Yeah. Um, I think there are, there is some, there's an issue on one of the town roads that I think we have to do an executive session, um. So I, I just don't, I don't.
I wanna set a committee date, so, I don't, that's actionable, but I think that's all other business, so.
Backing down to all of them.
Okay, so I don't think there's anything to add, um, to the.
I will follow, it is. Seven nine, and I will call the select board meeting order. We apologize for being a little late.
Bye Josh, thank you.
Thanks, Josh.
Board meeting ran over a few minutes. So, under the select board agenda. We have no additions or deletions, we are going to have a, an executive, executive session. Um, that's not over yet, Nick.
It is, it's on the second page, be for, yep.
Alright, so the next of gen, our next item on the agenda is the minutes of the previous meeting. I just have a, need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion made by Jamie and second by Cynthia to approve minutes of the previous meeting, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, this point in the agenda is public comments, anything not already on the agenda? Now's your time, anybody in the room, or I'm like, yes, Steve, go ahead.
Steve Claperty, I have a question, a few, um, meetings ago. I presented, uh, the town of Chester's, um, annual report. And where they got a little bit over four million dollars in grants. And I asked, um, at that time, how much ten dollar money did the town of Arlington give in grants? And like I said, I didn't expect the answer then, but, you know, since then, has anybody found out how much? The town of Arlington received in grants?
Um, I did ask Nick about this, and he said that his preliminary overview of. The accounting was that it was about two hundred thousand, but I have not verified that number. And the only, um. Concern that I have is that I could be wrong, but I think that Chester, one of those municipalities in this suffered from repeated flooding. So I don't know if some of those grants were state grants for road and bridge repairs, and I don't, I don't know that. I have not looked, I have the materials, you know, that, that you, that you gave us, but I have not looked that up. So right now, that is, I'm not swearing to that figure, but that is the figure that Nick gave, because I did remember your question.
Well, the swag doesn't sound too promising. Um, that, you know, hopefully you had to go through the process of selecting a new town administrator. That we asked, uh, that individual, him or her, to get more money, because we have a lot of projects. And the town cannot afford a lot of debt. And the more money we get for grants, the better off we are.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Alright, uh, new business, the delinquent tax collector policy. You need to pass it around.
Um, everybody should have received a copy of it, um, uh, Nick, uh, and I both went through it. Um, those are other things. Um, Nick and I both went through it, my understanding is both, uh, treasurer and, um, the delinquent tax collector also weighed in on it. Um, and so I believe that we can certainly have any discussion or even possible revisions as needed, but that, um. The task right now is for the board to approve it, and I can't remember if it's just you signing or if it's all of us.
All of us signing, so we can have discussion about it. I'll make a motion to approve the, um, delinquent tax collector. Policy as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Matt and seconded by Cynthia to approve the delinquent tax collection policy discussion.
I thought it was pretty well written and thought through. Steve, you have?
Yeah, I'll, a few things, one, it starts off in section six A, you have in there the NEMRIC system? And remember, if you change systems, you gotta come back to a policy and change policy. So, I'm, I would say look at it as changes to the town's accounting or financial system. Just to keep it, you know, um.
Generic.
Yeah, that make that a generic, not a specific, yeah. And then, um.
You should do that under E and under F.
Oh, yeah, oh, there's a word, wherever it shows up. Um, under section I. It says biweekly, the finance administrator slash treasurer runs a report of penalties payroll for payroll. And submits to the delinquent tax collector. What does payroll have to do with delinquent taxes? Does? I'm just reading the words.
Right.
They said, I get paid by the town, the payroll department. She submits what my amount of payment should be.
Okay, because yours is basically commission based.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you, that's how you get your commission.
It's not payroll in general.
Yeah, I was just looking at. And then section K. Um, the last part it says, and then an additional four percent on or around January first of each year. That should say like, um, the first business day after, uh, the start of the new calendar year. You know, something, because if you say on or about, and the first is on. A Saturday, you know, if I do it the thirty-first, you know, that's on or about, or do I wait to the third? So you use.
First business day after the New Year's.
Business day.
Yeah.
After the first day.
Yeah.
And why is it only twice a year?
It used to be only once. She, uh.
Right.
Established that. Three or four years ago, Tiffany, yeah, so it used to be the penalty was eight percent, now it's it.
Gotcha.
And they decided to buffer it.
And make it far fewer.
Cause it was, if you recall, November fourth is the due date in the hands of the treasurer.
Yeah.
And if it was in the fifth, it was eight percent. And they just thought it was a little harsh to have eight percent. Back close, so there's a window to the first. So it, it gives you six or seven weeks of a cushion for the people that, for whatever reason missed it. I'm not saying negro or sad is an excuse, because everybody knows it, even out of towners, so. But that was her implementing that. The delinquent tax collector has the final column, honestly.
Yeah, with finally said, I'm curious as to why.
But that's how it evolved to that, and it's a very recent development, because back when Dick and Keo ran the. The office, it was eight percent and that was it. And he didn't have much problem with people complying with it, because it was hard.
Yeah.
So.
Can I amend my motion?
And section L, you're making them both sign their lives away on things. But you're only keeping a copy, um, with the finance administrator and treasurer. Shouldn't a copy go to the, the, the delinquent tax collector?
Honestly, I don't get anything except about the paycheck.
Okay.
And NEMRIC is also in that section.
Yeah, I already got that.
Yeah, okay, I'm just.
Can I amend the motion?
You may.
I'll amend my motion to accept the delinquent tax collector policy as presented with the following changes. Six dot A, changing NEMRIC.
Have you written them on your copy?
I did.
Okay.
So I, uh, six dot A, changing NEMRIC to town's financial system. Six dot E, changing NEMRIC to town's financial system. Six dot F, changing NEMRIC to town's financial system. Six dot K, changing on or around January first each year. To first business day after the first of the year. And six dot L, changing NEMRIC to town's financial system.
A second for that motion.
Okay, so we'll.
Cause I think we could sign the signature page. Yeah, I will give that to you.
So the amended motion is to. Include those edits that were just delineated. Um.
I gave those to Ja, uh, to Cynthia Janet.
Yes, and you seconded.
Thank you.
Yeah, I did.
Yes, another discussion.
Sorry, I just wanted to, I, I did miss, um, several other recommendations, most of these are absolutely fine, but I'm still a little bit concerned about. Um, not posting to the NEMRIC, NEMRIC system. I just wanna know what the reasoning for that is.
Wh- where, where are you, where are you talking about?
Um, I don't have, I don't post the payments to the NEMRIC system anymore, I just put the payments in the. Excuse me, in the tax collector, or the town treasurer's spot. Basically, that's all I do, I just collect the checks.
Well, I, I, I have, you know, Nick was the one that was part of all the different discussions. My impression was, is that. The idea is that the posting is all done by one person, so it all gets done. As, as soon as you have the money and you put it in her box, and then she does a posting, rather than having different people doing a posting. That is my impression, but that's just my impression. And I don't know that I'm comfortable changing that without consulting Christian, because I don't know enough about what. What was underneath that, I'm, I'm sorry.
That's what I thought this was about, we did consult, like we. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I was, no, that's perfectly fine, I, there's, it, it seems in my mind that. Over time, and this is slightly changed, because now Christian is a hired employee, so. Continuity of process, it would make sense that our hired employee that is responsible for. The finances of, you know, uh, the treasurer's office and handling all of that. Would be the one making the posting and the work. That needs to be done in the town's financial system, because ultimately, that hired employee is, we're holding. That position accountable for it. And as a hired employee, we have more control over that, so it, in my mind, it makes more sense for continuity of. All of the process.
But my issue is, is she is answering. As an employee, the town has a delinquent tax collector, and she's not a delinquent tax collector.
But she's not doing any of the delinquent tax collecting, she's just processing the financial payment.
Correct, but like for. Um, it was like automatic payments, I had to hand her, I had to keep, give her a copy of the agreement that I made. It really has nothing to do with. The town treasurer. She's an, she's an employee of, she's a town treasurer employee of the town of Arlington.
Correct.
So. If something were to mess up on the delinquent tax department side, I'm the delinquent tax collector, who's gonna answer for that?
If it was a payment posting or process issue with what the treasurer is supposed to. Post, let's say something didn't get posted, right, and that was her. That would be between the select board and the employee.
But she's not the delinquent tax.
I under.
So is it that, is it that?
She's our finance director.
Right, so is it, is it that you're feeling that when you get. Delinquent tax payment. Um, rather than giving it to Christian, you should be collecting that NEMRIC, is that your position?
Right, and then you have heard the checks for depositing, she's like the town treasurer, she should be depositing the checks and taking it from there.
Um, is it your position that on statutory basis? You as a delinquent tax collector must be the one that enters it in NEMRIC?
Honest, no, not on a statutory, I'm just, I just wanna know these questions, who's gonna be responsible if something goes wrong?
I, I think that, that both you need to document what you do, so if you, um, if you accept the payment. And then transfer the payment to her for depositing the money and entry into NEMRIC. Or you to this, I would make a copy of the paperwork you're giving her, you know, sign it and date. But you get the check.
It comes directly to you. I get nothing except a copy of what my paycheck is.
Then what would you be entering in NEMRIC?
I used to enter the payments, I used to post the payments in NEMRIC, I don't get anything to that.
I mean, there is paperwork for this, because I keep it with payroll. When Christian writes it all up, everybody's documented, every amount is there. Um, like, it, we have all that information, and I, I keep it with payroll.
Right, you have, I totally agree with that, you have all of that.
I have everything.
Well, that's as simple as we just scan the paperwork and.
I have it, we, yeah, we have it available.
That's not a problem.
If you're just asking for copies of that paperwork, is that, is that what you're saying? Or you're saying, say something is wrong with the process? Who's accountable? I think that's what I'm here.
Yeah.
So, um.
If you say, if you say she's accountable, then that's fine, just keep writing something.
Okay. Um, cause I think the other issue is.
It's, oh, I'm sorry.
Essentially, you're asking for a receipt. You're asking for a receipt other than just the, this was my pay. Uh, receipt of what, owes transaction.
Right, and if all you want me to do is contact the residents and tell them, like, he's a collector, I guess is what you wanna call it, fine, but. I'd like that.
Okay. So I think that's just a matter of implementing a procedure.
That's a procedure.
Yeah, that's a procedure, not a policy, implement a procedure that then. Covers you, covers her. And everybody, there's a clean line of what, who's responsible.
Tell me again, I thought that's what this was gonna be, that we both met with Nick about. Under my impression, Nick told me that he had met with Christian.
Yep.
And he didn't meet with me, he just sent me a copy of his house.
Okay, well, um, I am actually not really clear about what. You would want different about this, I understand about providing copies of paperwork to you. Um, you know, is that something that needs to be done, we can do that, but um, I was not part of. This whole process of working it out, so I can't, honestly, I, I wasn't either. So, um.
I think other than just changing some procedure, the policy with those minor revisions. And then we just ensure that we get.
It does what you want to do.
And that that could be as simple as Janet just scans and emails you the.
Of the transaction.
Whether it's weekly or bi-weekly or monthly, whatever it is.
It should like.
For every time it happens.
Well, in years, it's every other day and it shouldn't be every other day, because if the payment isn't posted, I'm continuously calling these residents. They're saying, oh, I just sent the.
Okay, so that's, that's an important issue. Because if she's trying to collect and people have sent their check, now, of course, it may not have been deposited yet. But if they've sent their check.
As long as it's posted, that's fine. Christian can worry about deposit, I don't, unless I have to do with that, the better off I am. As long as it's posted.
Yes.
The day she.
Yes.
Yep.
Yep.
And I, I don't know if that's more of a policy or procedure.
It's a procedure.
Procedure, for sure. But it needs to be, whatever that procedure is, needs to be fully followed and then act. But that's not necessarily, doesn't change this policy. It's just a procedure.
We can tweak this going forward, we're putting this in place.
Policy, it can be.
So let's go ahead and put this in place with um Matt's edits. And then, um. And then we can, uh. You know, we can discuss the question of the timely posting, you know, who's paid and who hasn't paid.
It's actually every other day, I see, but, I mean. Just, I guess. I just wanna make sure it's every other.
Okay, so, uh. Everybody understand the motion with the edits. All right, any other discussion? All those in favor signify the say aye. Any opposed? Motion there, and we'll see that that procedure gets implemented, whatever it might be.
And we need to sign the sheet.
Yeah.
And I will make the um, the necessary revisions. And I'll discuss the procedure issue. Um, with Janet. Um, let me give you a copy of the final one.
Okay.
Um, what is your, what is your email?
So we'll show.
It is a show up, it's just.
Five, five point two Arlington Fire Department Syracuse trip.
So I don't have any um paperwork about that, I don't know what the situation is.
Be honest, I didn't even know, but I'm documenting, I'm documenting. So, we researched that, but um if I could. Could ask when you guys go into an executive session, if I could just have a minute on something. Gonna work out, and I'll, I'll let you know why I'm there. Um, but as of right now, I'd say this is kind of on hold and.
Okay.
And your request for executive session is personnel?
Yes.
Okay, just wanna make sure.
Mm-hmm, alright. There is a slew of. Literate licenses and such.
Oh, my god.
Looks like there's six or seven of them, just seen by individuals who want to do. This one is for Baton Hill Resorts. And there is a outside consumption, three class and first class and faculty license. These are all verbal, uh, proven.
Okay, I make, um, through this is, that's, um, very soon.
Secured, right?
No, yeah.
No, Baton Hill Resorts is Arlington Inn.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I make a motion to approve. Um, a first class hotel license, a third class hotel license, and an outside consumption permit. All liquor licenses for the Arlington Inn under Baton Hill Resorts, motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Cynthia and second by Jamie. To find, that you made the motion. All those in favor signify the say aye. The next two are a tobacco license and a second class license for the Wayside Store.
I make a motion to approve a second class liquor license and tobacco license. For the West Arlington Wayside Store, uh, motion to approve.
Second, mostly made by Cynthia, second by Jamie, to approve the. Two applications for the Wayside Store, all those in favor signify the say aye. And finally, the American Legion Post sixty nine Incorporated. Outside Consumption First Class Club License and Third Class Club License.
Make a motion to approve, um. Outside Consumption Permit, First Class Club License and a Third Class Club License, all for the American Legion Post sixty nine, motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Cynthia and seconded by Matt to approve the American Legion Post sixty nine. Applications, all those in favor signify the say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Alright, that's done. Next item, there's a state highway grants and aid letter for twenty twenty six. And I believe they just authorized me to sign it. There's a, this is an eighty twenty, so the total request, um, the BCRC invoice. Is nine hundred seventy three thousand forty nine cents. Plus the total matching share, the total request. That matching share is a hundred ninety four seventy, so that would be subtracted. That's our share and so the amount that could, of the request is seven seventy eight seventy nine. And.
Wait. This is the letter of intent, what is this? That's, isn't that the seven A sidewalk that you signed for B- BCRC to allow payment? I think the one you just read, isn't that the sidewalk one?
That's the sidewalk and that's.
And that's diff- that's different. That's what, that's what Dan signs periodically when they send it to us. So this is the letter, the letter of intent to participate in the municipal grants and aid program. And there's associated paperwork, um, and, and a sample invoice, but I think right now. All we have to do is approve it and you sign it, that is my impression.
Yes.
And, and Janet, what is the, what is the, um. The sidewalk invoice, wouldn't that be part of the warrants? No, it's nothing to do with the warrant, Dan signs it, I return it to BCRC. And then she can submit to payment once he's approved it, we do this periodically whenever these come through, they've done, we've done a lot of them.
Do we need to explicitly approve it as a board or does she?
No, it's, Dan's the only one required to sign.
So this is the, uh, letter of intent, this made in the Municipal Roads Grants and Aid Program. For twenty twenty six. And I guess all you guys have to do is authorize me to sign it.
I make a motion to approve, uh, Chairman Harvey signing a letter of intent to participate in the fiscal year twenty six Municipal Roads. Grants in aid program.
Second. Motion made by Cynthia, second by Glenn. To participate in the Grants and Aid Program for twenty twenty six. All those in favor signify the say aye.
Could I just, so I think that this just lays out a lot of things that we need to do, um. And, uh, and so, and I'll, I'll be reviewing it, um, you know, to make sure that we're. Doing all of it, um, but right now, all we need to do is just say, yeah, we're gonna do it, and then I will, um, send it in.
And as I understand it, we may have multiple requests within that program.
I believe so, I believe so.
It's a entire.
But, cause basically it's saying that, that we wanna participate in this program, and because we wanna participate, we will, we will, um. Do best management practices, we will do this, we will do this, you know, and all that kind of, we will be a good boy, and you know, that's.
All those in favor signify the say aye. Bye. And there is, this must be the other one though.
It's, um, let's see. Yeah, chloride, and then there's this more mortgage discharge. And what that is, is some kind of, well, we'll talk about that.
So this one is from Innovative Surface Solutions. Um, price quote valid from April second of twenty five, except from the thirty of twenty five. And it's basically for a chloride solution for the gravel roads. Um, proverb is overing five thousand gallons at a dollar eleven a gallon.
I'll make a motion to approve the quote from Innovative Surface Solutions for the. What are we calling it, the dust mitigation? The chloride solution for dust control in the amount of one dollar and eleven cents per gallon. For a total quantity of five thousand gallons. Second.
Motion made by Matt and second by Glenn to approve the fluoride award to Pro.
Innovative surface solution?
Innovative sur- surface solution. For a total of five thousand gallons at a dollar eleven a gallon. All those in favor signify the say aye.
Okay, so Dan, I do think that you need to sign this now where it says, um, volume commitment, we're saying five thousand, right? Right, I know, I just wanted to be sure that was, that I'm interviewing.
I'm pretty sure, though, we've done them in the past, the delivery quantity is five thousand gallons at a time.
Right.
So you could, and I don't know how much Mark's gonna put out, but you could go over five thousand.
Well, if he needs more than another five thousand, you can come back and ask for it.
But that's what they deliver at one time.
Gotcha.
There's probably not what the tank holds. The stores.
Yeah, there's.
Well, if we were gonna buy ten thousand gallons, then we would negotiate a different price, other than a dollar eleven a gallon.
Yeah, I don't know what you negotiate, I'm just telling you that's what I used to do.
Cause the more I buy, the less I should pay.
Well, that delivery quantity isn't what you per se buying, unless that's what you negotiated. The delivery quantity is what they can fit on your truck, what you have stored. That's not, yeah, that's just.
No, it says that we're buying five thousand gallons at a dollar eleven, period, that's what it says here.
Yep.
So, we're gonna say five thousand gallons here?
Yes.
Okay, and if, and if there's, there's an issue and we need more, then we do it again, is that right?
That's right, yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna, um.
Otherwise, we would commit to ten thousand gallons at a lower rate and take it at two deliveries. I can't either.
How many gallons did you use last year, for the last two years?
That's a very good question.
I mean, I think there's a reason why this is what.
I think our tank only holds.
That's right, I think, I think that's the basis of it, but I don't, I don't have, I don't have that information. Okay, so that's, we have, we go, yeah, I mean, we go.
No, we haven't.
We have a link.
All those in favor signify the say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the, the mortgage thing, um, this is, uh, the. Um, Arlington Area Childcare is, uh, going to be, um, remortgaging. Um, and, uh, they, it turned out there was some kind of old mortgage left. On the records and the town was somehow listed part of this. Um. And the, the, and it had to do with the grant that was involved in the original construction of that program. So that mortgage is paid off, it's defunct, so John Thrasher is asking us to, um.
Discharge.
To discharge it, and it has to be notarized, so what I would like is to have. The board authorize me to sign it, and then I can go downstairs and sign it, and then file it, they've already paid the fee and everything. So, um.
Are we sure that the grant was closed out?
I'm sure.
If it ran through the town, I'm just.
That's a, it's an older grant, when they first built it.
Okay.
And that's the only thing.
Okay.
Um, so I'll make a motion to approve of. Uh.
Why don't I make, I'll make a motion to authorize Cynthia Browning to sign the. Mortgage discharge paperwork, uh, related to the mortgage deed to the town of Arlington dated May twenty third, twenty twenty two. Um, book one oh five, page one seventy three, discharging the amount of five hundred ninety one thousand seven hundred dollars. In relation to the Arlington Area Childcare property.
Second.
Motion made by Matt and seconded by Cynthia to discharge the, was there a mortgage number on that?
There is not.
I would just say. So for the Arlington area.
Uh, two thousand two, I'm sorry, I think I misspoke.
Yeah. The mortgage for the Arlington Area Childcare.
In two thousand two, book one oh five, page one seventy three.
Okay. All those in favor signify the say aye.
Right, aye.
Motion there. Was it the town was a, we were passed through for a grant from the state?
Okay, we never held a mortgage or lent any money or anything.
Okay.
But there've been a number of projects, the Arlington Area Childcare, the Shires, I think. Where it kinda passes.
They were, those grants will not go through the entity, the NGO, without passing through the town. It's just a perk of set for law.
Um. Okay, so there are a number of sort of, um. All other business things, I don't know if you wanna do the warrants first.
Get right to them.
Okay, so. The first is the water department. Um, as usual, the, uh. Premiums, the healthcare premiums are the biggest chunk at three thousand seven hundred, and then we also are paying quarterly amount. For the backup operator and services from burst snow. Um, so I make a motion to approve the total of eleven thousand nine hundred ninety eight dollars and seventy four cents.
Well, second.
What was the order, yeah, order number?
Oh, I'm sorry, um, checkpoint report number WD eight, April eighteenth, twenty twenty five.
What was the cents on that, eleven thousand nine?
Seventy four cents.
I'll seconded that, Dan.
Motion made by Cynthia and said by Matt to approve checkpoint report WD eight. In the total amount of eleven thousand nine hundred ninety eight dollars and seventy four cents. All those in favor signify the say aye.
Alright.
Aye.
Alright.
Question, yes, you're, uh, we're paying, uh, Snow's Plumbing and Heating to the backup operator. For the fifty nine fifteen. Um, since we're paying the company, do we have a worker's comp certificate, do we?
We do.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Oh.
And the company, we have a.
Thank you.
Good question. Um, okay, so the next one is gonna be the town Arlington. Once again, the premiums are, the healthcare premiums are big chunk, sixteen thousand six hundred. There's also hazard mitigation assistance from BCRC five thousand. Um fire department discos eight thousand seven hundred, thank you very much. And um remount power two thousand four hundred, et cetera, et cetera. And then fire department accident insurance, three thousand three hundred fifty. So and then a a variety of um regular kinds of things. So I make a motion to approve the town of Arlington's regular expenses, check warrant report number eight dated four eighteen, twenty twenty five. Motion to approve the amount of forty eight thousand one hundred fifty seven dollars and twenty six cents.
Well, second.
Motion made by Cynthia and seconded by Matt to approve check warrant report number eight for the total amount of forty eight thousand one hundred fifty seven dollars and twenty six cents. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
I had one noted item for all other business. And I think that's, we've got our town admin search committee and I formed at the last meeting. And I believe that last Friday, applications closed. So we should probably set a date for the first committee meeting, I don't know how we wanna go about that.
You're on that committee, right?
I am.
I would say maybe Janet can contact everybody or you can. And then I think we should do it as soon as possible.
I mean, we should get started at least filtering through those.
There's a large number of them and I'm sure a lot of those will be filtered out quickly, but um.
Yeah, Janet, do you wanna send out a query or a doodle to see?
Yeah, I I I have nobody's email, except you. Um and I called, I asked Nick for Nicole's information. He had only a cell phone number and I did call and leave a message, but I haven't heard back because he thought that she should have the sign-ins for the LinkedIn. And indeed, so that she could filter through like the eighty applications and um that she would be the one to go through that.
Well, let me work, I'll take it to do then to work on that this week, Dan. And Janet, I'll help you with that, cause I have Todd's email address and Nicole's, I think. I know how to get ahold of Nicole, so yeah, we I'll work with, and Joe, we have Joe's information. Yeah, so Nicole, Todd and Joe.
Oh yeah, I have Jamie's obviously, yes.
Yeah, I know.
So I didn't, okay, I didn't leave a message.
Search committee, so um I'll help you with it, Janet, I'll work on it this week.
I called last week, they're both ready to go.
Okay, so as long as we're good with that, I'll do a doodle and we'll figure that out. Yeah, awesome, just wanna make sure that everybody's.
Yeah, Nick left me with the uh sign-in uh links for uh LinkedIn and uh and Indeed.
Super, awesome.
And you got that, Matt?
Did you have a question?
I have a.
Cause I don't know that I have it.
Nick left it with Janet, so that's all that it needs to be at right now and then we'll get someone on the committee to go through.
So all other business.
So I've heard from several of our employees in the building that we have been having tremendous phone issues.
Yes, and that was one of the things that I wanted to talk about. And I do have, I do have some information about it. So um the phone in in Nick's office has been out periodically, the phone in the Lister's office has been out periodically. And it seems to have no rhyme or reason where it goes out and then eventually it comes back on and it's just crazy. And the one thing, and Janet can chime in after I'm done, but the one thing that we discovered because she's been calling the company. Remember, this is the company, we're locked into a contract, we've got great problems. And she got somebody this time where they said they were able to go in and look at the system and now so that they said that their system is trying to put the calls through, but there may be something about our I T configuration that is not letting them come through. And she says that on her phone, which has been working, she was having problems and someone from Ian Abel came and did something and now it seems to be working. So I believe that Janet has contacted Ian Abel or she will to see if it's actually not Granite, whatever it is, but actually the I T in our building.
Well, they should be able to get the firewall logs and see.
And so um.
That should be a simple resolution.
Janet, is that, did I summarize that correctly?
Yes, yes, I I finally got someone really helpful today at Granite. And he was looking at it like while I was on the phone with him and he could see all those lines were pinging and trying to work. And so he did think it is a firewall issue. I called Ian Abel, Ian Abel's gonna talk to the people that fixed my phone like I don't know, maybe a year ago when we've signed on with Granite. And so we are on our way to having a a permanent solution.
Well, we think, we think, we don't know, cause remember, it's really easy for one company to say, oh, it's not us, it's you, you know, so.
The phone, is the phone saying registration expired or?
Says no account.
Yeah, it says no account when it doesn't work.
And it's dead, there's not even.
So it's losing its SIP registration, so. Well, let's go with this and then if it continues to be a problem, I'm happy to help out with that and I'll call Granite.
And the one, the one thing that the the Lister's office is like, we can't work. Um and they want us to get a cell phone for the Lister's office, like even just a track phone. And I don't wanna do anything like that. All right, and then um I I then I have some things for the for the executive session and I guess. And Brian, you do too.
Yes.
Did you say?
And you got something else for other business.
The, I think the Zega Cities grant, we were waiting for that to get close from the park. Um and then we were gonna try for a grant for some cameras to protect.
Cameras, but we needed that grant for the playground to get closed down.
So I was just checking up on that.
It was on my note, I just hadn't gotten that far, so we'll have to look in to see if it's actually closed. I think Nick was gonna send the paperwork, but then it takes a while as well, so.
It was on my mind.
Yeah, I asked Nick before I left to go to Buffalo and he said that he was, that was two weeks ago, so he said that he was finishing the paperwork on that, we'll just verify.
Okay, so that would, if I do see him tomorrow, that would be something.
Yeah, it would be good to ask for that.
Um so I have a question and I don't know if you guys, any of you guys can help me with this and I am hoping to see Nick tomorrow when I can ask him about it, but what it is, is that somebody's inquired about and doing an activity at the park in conjunction with duck derby, this is not the duck derby people, that's the daycare, this is, was it the Arlington area youth base? Baseball associating is thinking about doing something in the afternoon. And so she's inquiring about a permit and I have the permit form, which has the list of fees and other kinds of stuff. And she doesn't fully know exactly what she's gonna want, but I don't know where the park calendar is, I don't know who has it. I couldn't find it in the system and I didn't know if any of you guys knew anything about it.
Willie pretty much handles that.
Willie handles that, so so she she would fill out a permit, so I would check with him?
I would check with Willie.
Okay, so I did send him an email about it, so but but she would fill out the form and pay the fee to the town. But it, but the scheduling is through Willie.
Yeah.
Okay.
On the park, um I did get a written letter back from um the park committee, Ron Weber, and they are definitely in for the nine thousand for the golf course. And possibly more, depending on where everything falls out. And as soon as we get the numbers for the new toilets, urinals and and sinks, they are looking at helping out with that as well. Um those were our two biggest issues right now. Um so they are on board, at least with the, for nine thousand dollars for the the golf course reconstruction of the four greens.
And do you have an email from them?
I do.
Could you forward it to me so that I can put it, um I can file it somewhere?
So will that be, uh are we gonna get the quotes for the golf course work firmed up and everything and then have that?
So Joe is still working on that, yes, and his estimated cost was between fourteen and fifteen thousand dollars. And that's with us using the town highway to do some of the work. Um and uh he is still working on that, the whole thing and getting the permitting and everything done, so.
I think we just, now that we have this from the park committee, we can look at our budget and then make an action maybe on the at the next select board meeting, so we can get started, that gives him two weeks to get, for Joe to get everything affirmed, updated. Quote to us.
Okay, that's, that's great. That's, 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 thank you very much, that's great.
Furthermore, at the park.
Yeah.
When we are renting out fields, it has gotta be noted that they are not to pull bases and change the diameter or the size.
Yes.
The field.
Tell me of that conversation. When we're, when we're doing what on the field?
So last year, the gentleman from the bombers that rented the field pulled all the bases and the base cores. I spent four and a half hours down there trying to get the bases back in line for the high school softball to play.
For their dimensions.
For the dimension. We are going to run the robot on it this week, on Wednesday, to try and get it finalized because it's very, very close, it's off a few inches and.
He also dug up the mound and the little league field and.
He dug up everything.
Was this a one, one day event?
He only used Little League field this year once.
Yeah, and I don't know how much he used it last year.
He used it a lot last year.
He used it a lot last year. He has since moved to Bennington and from what I understand, they're having issues with him down there too, so. But we need to make, make it very clear.
And why did he do that? Did it have to do with baseball or softball?
Softball bases to baseball dimensions.
Well, and what, and I'm confused about that, cause she's talking about baseball and I thought they were softball too.
That's, that's, the Little League baseball is one thing. I'm saying the gentleman that had the bombers that rented the field last year.
Yeah.
When he went in there, he went on the softball field and he pulled the bases and the core.
Okay.
Where the bases are mounted.
Permit application to state that you are not allowed to move the base configuration of the baseball or softball fields.
We have baseball fields and we have softball fields.
Now, now at this point, Benny and I gotta go down there and fix the mound or that on the Little League field because now it's ten feet or six feet back where it should be for the kids pitch, Little League field.
Yeah, he's made a mess of all the fields, yeah, other than the baseball field, cause he didn't use that.
Okay, so basically, whatever field it is, nobody who rents a field can touch anything.
They do not change the base configuration.
And so if they rent it and they're like, wait a minute, this is for adults, so we want it different, they cannot do that. They need to look at it ahead of time, they cannot touch that.
It's the same dimensions.
If they alter it, they'll be charged, hold it and.
Yeah, at a thousand dollars per hour.
I was on the, I was on the phone with Jamie that day, he was not a happy camper.
A softball baseline is sixty feet from home plate to first base, sixty to second.
Yeah.
He moved it to seventy five, which is baseball dimensions. So it put the bases out at the grass, but he pulled the core. He pulled the the core.
The anchor.
Where it, everything amounts to.
I like adding the clause in there that if you need to use it as presented as is and if you make alterations to the field, you'll be charged and then we put a number in there that's not attractive. So you're gonna pay a thousand dollars an hour.
And make it that you will not be allowed to use.
And you'll never use the park again.
I mean, I understand the guy's a decent guy, but he did some real. Yeah, back and put them back to where they were, he should never have pulled the cores.
Exactly.
Yep.
He should never have pulled the base cores.
Yeah.
You understand moving the bases because, but you don't have to pull the cores to do that. Meeting, we should just make a change to that.
Yeah, 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 I'll, I'll bring back.
Oh, I was extremely upset that day when I got down there.
Okay.
And I mean, I spent four and a half hours getting them close, very close. But I need the, we're gonna do the robot on them and and get things set on, um it's just, it's not.
Okay, so um one more thing, um and then then I think we should go to the executive session unless there's anything else from anybody. Um Dan, did you ever check in with Keith?
I did, I tried to keep and he and I are gonna get together this coming weekend with the light are here on the table and
Okay.
He did say that the, he he recommended that we talk to the surveyor, Wright.
Richard Wright or, no.
But anyway, he said, he's done work up there recently. And he presses.
Would, would it be possible for me to join that meeting?
I don't see why not. But he was gonna, he was gonna lay out the, the light of math.
And that's all in there, everything that was presented is right, is is in there, Joe Nash did spend some time um looking at maps to try to see if she could find anything else um that was related to it, but um the, I think the key, the key issue, I mean, I just think we need to know um what Keith's understanding. Okay, that's fantastic.
Ultimately, we will decide. Our part in this is just to decide where the right of way is.
Right.
And they deal with it, whatever, how would they wanna deal with it, it's out of our hands.
Right, and right, right now, right now, right now, the right of way is in a certain place in our, in the records we have and on the town, and they're saying it should be in another place. And that, you know.
Saying something does not make it so.
Nope, and it's also interesting, but it's also interesting that they were using the basis for that how the road looks on the white are after there'd been work on the road, so of course it looks like a road because the landowner did work on the road, so you know, it's like this thing.
But he, he said that the the surveyor Wright was uh reputable and you know.
Right. Okay, okay.
The other thing to keep in mind is depending on who is paying there, I'm not saying everybody's pro, but I'm saying for all of them. Oh yeah, so if, if they've got a a surveyor that says nothing such and they're paying the bill, you gotta weigh it that way.
Right, and and I think that that pending what um what you, Mr. Scott's come up with.
Yeah.
I think then at some point, we do have to have a hearing about that, um and but that's.
And just do a final determination, this, there is a right of way, this is where we believe it is and up with legal counsel on board. And deal with it what you will.
And what was the name of the law firm that we go to if Merrill is not, is, has a conflict?
Uh Pietro Lynn at Blackman Lynn. Pietro Lynn, Lynn Lynn and Blackman.
Pietro?
Yep.
Yeah.
Lynn.
L Y N N? Linden?
Yeah, Lynn, Lynn and Blackman.
N, Lynn and Blackman, must be.
Because they also do work for the school.
Black Man or Black Murn? M O N? Okay, Pietro Lynn at Lynn Lynn and Blackman, okay, all right, that's great. All right, so.
We need to go into executive session for personnel matter.
Personnel and probably legal.
Yeah, legal.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that a premature discussion of a personnel and legal issue would cause the municipality to su- suffer substantial disadvantage.
Second. Motion made by Matt and second by Jamie to um establish the reason for the executive session as a legal and personnel matter. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
And.
Not yet.
Not yet, we got one more. I'll make a motion to enter into executive session for discussion of said legal and personnel issues. And to invite Chief Holly into the executive session for his portion of the discussion.
Motion made by Matt and second by Glenn. To let her into executive session to discuss said legal and personnel matters and invite uh Chief Holly to the discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. And I don't think there'll be any action, right, so Janet, we can just give you a dismissed time when we come out. I'll help you.